This is the meeting of the Mont Eagle Town Council, February 24th, 2025. We'll have our prayer by Dan Sargent.
Can we pray? Father, we just come before you this afternoon thanking you again for the community in which we live. We thank you for the opportunities we have to continue to conduct business in the town of Mont Eagle. And we want to just thank you for our first responders, our policemen, our EMS people, and those that look after us. And we just continue to thank you for them and their hard work and diligent preparation to continue their work. And we ask a blessing on our time in the meeting tonight. Give us to find the solutions to the challenges we face, and we'll be thankful and ask that you'd accept our thanks in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
It is my great pleasure to introduce Sadie Jo Brown, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. If you will remain standing, the Mont Eagle Elementary School Handbell Choir, under the direction of Pam Malouf, assisted by Wendy Whitmore, will now have the National Anthem. Thank you. Every now and then, we need that. Okay. Moving along, roll call, please.
Present.
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 Yes, here.
Here. Oh, present. Okay, you have the minutes of the January 27th meeting. I'll accept the motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the January 27, 25 meetings.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections submitted?
Somewhere, Grant's name was misspelled.
Yes, that was a typo that has since been corrected.
That's all I saw.
Okay.
That was the sick Grant, by the way. That's why it was misspelled.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Citizens' comments? At this point, I'll remind everyone, including the aldermen, we have a three-minute limit, and that is our policy from now on. It has been our policy in the past. So are there any citizen comments? Katie?
Thank you. I'm Katie Trahan. And first of all, I wanted to say how much I appreciate all of our emergency responders. And I really appreciate the police presence that I see around town. They've been very busy, it looks like, as well as the fire and the other emergency responders. I do have been having an issue that has ticked up lately with some late-night burning in town. And it seeps into our house through the fireplace, and it smells like petroleum. And this has happened on and off since we've moved to town. And different... It's been addressed off and on, and it'll calm down and then tick back up. And I've talked to the police chief and to the fire chief about how I should handle this, and have been told to, you know, call it in, and I will. But I thought that y'all should be aware of this issue so that, you know, and that others should too, so that if they're smelling it or having an issue. It happened this last Friday night about 10 o'clock, and I had a really bad migraine that has just started to subside because the smell of it is just horrific. And so I can imagine if other people have respiratory issues or anything, it could affect them in a really negative way as well. So that's all. And I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Obviously, Chief Railline, Chief Lawyer, let's continue to monitor that and accept any phone calls we get. That's an issue that needs to be addressed. Mr. Waller?
I have another issue of public concern that I think warrants the attention of the town council. We have on North Bluff Circle for many months, if not years, had a traveling trasher who enjoys throwing his dinner and breakfast material out on the side of the road irrespective of people's rights not to have trash on their property. And I'm sure Dean Lay knows because he has traveled that road all the time, sees the trash there, particularly the big cups when people are too lazy to find a trash can. They just put it out there on the road. There's another polluter here in town trashing not only the side of the road, but the water system itself, and that's Rocky Top up here. When you drive over to the convenience center on a rainy day, you'll see water running both ways, but pretty heavily toward the west, which ends up in our water supply, which is not only a violation of town law, but it's a violation of Tennessee law. And I don't understand why our building department is not in force. Is that me or somebody else?
Somebody else.
It's a gremlin we're trying to find.
Because I don't know why we can't get the laws enforced in the town to have paved parking when you're going to have parking places for trucks, so that we don't have all that dirt coming off onto Forside Street and then running both ways in the trash and getting into our water supply. This seems to me we're being lenient with some people, polluters that throw it out of their windows and rocky-top business up here. As far as the North Bluff Drive street polluter... Hmm, I did pave. Well, at any rate, maybe we could get our police department to do something, to put cameras out, find out who's doing this. If they don't want to prosecute, if they'd let me know, I'd bring suit against jerks because I'm getting tired of going out there. I'm 89, and I'm getting tired of going out and picking up trash. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. The water, I'll certainly look at. If you know who the perpetrator is for trash, we don't need a name now, but please let code enforcement know or the police department, and we'll deal with that. Unfortunately, we don't always know who does that, but if anyone knows of anything, please let us know because that is serious, and it's just to look for the town. That's inappropriate. Any other citizen comments at this time? Yes?
Name is Dennis Congrove. I live in 71 Bluff Circle Drive. Is there still a leash law here in Mont Eagle?
It's a good question. We could look it up. I think there is.
It's a state law.
Well, I have pictures of two dogs that comes continuously over in my yard, and they do their business there. I don't have any dogs, so I don't appreciate my grandchildren having to get out and be around this. But...
Do you know the owners of the dogs?
I think I do, and I'm not real sure. I'm not met either one of them. I've just been told.
Okay.
But I do have pictures of them. If either one of you want to look at them.
One of them might be mine because it gets out a lot and...
Is yours a...
It's like a light-colored...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I apologize. That dog, my wife tells me he minds, but what happens is as soon as the gate gets open, if anybody's not watching, he bolts, and we...
He is one of the ones I got a video of digging a hole in my yard, and...
I can fix that. That's a good thing. That's an easy one for me to fix, so we can...
And then the black dog is a lab, which I think lives up in your neck of the woods, too.
I know that one.
Mr. Spiegel's place. Dean, do you know who I'm talking of there?
I don't know who lives there now, yeah, but I know where the home you're talking about.
Okay.
Jason.
I think he has the black lab that's the other traitor.
Well, that's a short distance. I mean, it's on a different street, but it's the flow graph. Because the flow flies, it's a short distance over to your house.
Yes. But he likes doing his business in my yard also.
Well, I will probably have to build a new gate, but I will do that, and I apologize. He's just... She actually is particularly conniving.
Neither one of them dangerous. It's just the fact that I park my lawnmowers in the building, and after I mow, the last thing I want to do after putting four hours on lawnmowers, stand out there and wash stuff off that's not belonging to me.
I got it. I understand.
Another thing I like to have a question about is when somebody puts something across their property line onto your property that's trashing up what you own, I think Anita is aware of this, or my wife and her stepdad's names are on the deeds, and we have a neighbor which is below us that has parked a camper, has got stuff stored over there, and it's trashed up. I looked at it today. It looks like there's somebody living in that camper. I asked at one time, when my youngest was going to move out, and she asked if she could put a camper in our property down there to live until they got their mobile home set up, her and Garrett. The town told us at the time that that was not feasible. It could not be done, that there could not be a camper set up on the same deed. So not only have they got it set up doing this, but they are also on my property, well, our property, and nobody's asked permission to do this. So... Right.
Okay. Please, I'll check with our ordinance officer and our codes enforcement and address that.
Okay. That's the two things right there.
Thank you very much. Any other citizen comments at this time?
Somebody's trying to talk from inside the machine.
Mayor's Communications?
Martha.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you raise your hand? I'm sorry.
Martha and Pilcher, I just want to say thank you for distributing the agenda ahead of time. I've heard several people tell me it's really helpful to do that.
Thank you. Any other citizens that I missed? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Anita Kegel. I live over on Eighth Street off of King Street in Mont Eagle here. And I'm asking, wondering about the roads that turned out to do work on them back in the summertime, and they are just atrocious to drive over. North Bluff, King Street, First Street, and I was wondering when we might, could expect those roads to be fixed.
Yes. What we've done, obviously during the winter, we can't. We're waiting for SBW and the Inflow and Infiltration Contractor to finish. They're supposed to make certain repairs for the areas that they dig up, and after that, we'll take a look at what other roads we can address.
Is there some way that maybe that can be filled in a little bit because the holes are just horrendous?
If you would send us a quick list tomorrow or call, we'll certainly take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you'd give me a second, I'll change where the cable's at and see if it works.
We're going to adjourn for five minutes. Ma'am, what's your name?
Anita Kegel.
Thank you.
Since we have a police presence here, we can always have May arrested.
Let's see if that helps.
Okay.
Daisy is her name. She's... She needs to be arrested.
You being arrested, not her.
No, that's my wife's dog. You'll have to arrest my wife.
I guess that, the way you were talking.
Okay, thank you. Mayor's Communications? There's a request that Fresh Mess continue this year, June 5th to October 2nd. I don't have an objection unless any council member objects, but they'd like to do Fresh Mess again this year. You know that the next meeting for the mayor and alderman is March 31st, the last Monday of the month, and our planning commission meeting is this upcoming, well, no, a week from tomorrow, which would be March 4th. Other than that, right now, I don't know of any other events coming up in March. Okay. Let's go to the reports, Police Department.
Good afternoon, councilmen, citizens. How you guys doing? Slow, chilly? Okay. All right. Numbers from January 15th to February 15th. I'll just read down here. We had two DUIs for the month, a whole bunch of zeros, which we do love to see. We've had nine drug-related cases. We did have three thefts, five escorts. Basically, what those are are oversized loads that come through Mont Eagle. They typically come through from Wednesday to Saturday, so we've had five of those. We had 34 traffic stops, we wrote eight citations, and 26 warnings, which is a lot better than what it has been. So I want to say thank you to the citizens for slowing down, stopping at stop signs, especially the 1041. And we've had a total of 264 calls for service. Slightly went up from the previous month of 222. We did have 10 vehicle crashes. That went up, I think, when we had seven the previous month. Most of those were speed-related. The last one that we had was last Monday. It was speed-related, unfortunately. It was in really bad weather. Luckily, the young man has survived, but after doing the reconstruction with the THP, they estimated him doing at least 70 miles an hour, leaving Mont Eagle on this one. So that's the reason why we pull a lot of vehicles over speeding, you know? We want to slow people down. We're fortunate that I did have pictures of the car, and then I decided, you know, you guys probably obviously see things, not a lot of blood and gore, but you would think that someone wouldn't survive that. Luckily, God was on his side, and, you know, he's a young kid, he's going to slow down. So numbers are going down, which that's what we want to see, the numbers go down. And also, too, on a positive note, out of all the arrests that we made over the month, not one was a Mont Eagle citizen. Not one. They were not a Mont Eagle citizen, so, which is pretty phenomenal. We've got great people that live in Mont Eagle, our citizens, our visitors that come to Mont Eagle. Unfortunately, we do have people that want to come here and do things they're not supposed to be doing because we have an interstate. So we're constantly bad on that. So out of the 34 stops that we had, six individuals had warrants, ranging from aggravated assault via drugs, drug charges, theft, violation of probation. Six of those individuals had 16 warrants collectively, several counties, and one out of the state of Georgia, and she may get charged with second-degree murder because someone had died from fentanyl that she sold. These people, these individuals, come to Mont Eagle not to live in Mont Eagle. They don't live in Mont Eagle. They're near here, but it is the interstate, and it's an easy way to deliver or pick up drugs. So we constantly stay on top of that, but I can't thank the citizens enough for... I mean, I get daily calls, citizens come by daily, and we need more citizens to bring up things like Ms. Trahan and the gentleman back there. So can't fix it if we don't know about it.
Thank you. Alderman, do you have any questions for the police chief? Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So it appears that we have maybe four sex offenders who live in the Mont Eagle city limits.
Yes, ma'am.
What, do you keep an eye on those people or, I mean, should we be concerned or should...
So we are aware that they are here. Mont Eagle, when I took over, obviously, I pulled that. The county is actually responsible for maintaining those records, maintaining that those individuals are living there, and making sure that they're maintaining whatever the court is telling them to. However, I do have those individuals in my office, and I have made contact with them, and they all have made mistakes, and they're not breaking any rules. But I am aware of who they are, actually. And it was six at one time, so...
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Fire Department.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Good evening. So this is a pretty long report, but I'm just going to, hopefully, we've read. I'm sorry I was late on submitting it to the hall room, but I'm just going to kind of brief on it. So SETD has performed the bid openings that I told you about last month. We finally done that at the end of the month for the 2023 CBDG grant, so now we're up for the process of reviewing bids, respect compliance, and then we'll start purchasing on our items. Hopefully, that'll be it for the next few weeks. This past weekend, we was down at Redco Truck Lot up here at City Hall 24. The members successfully completed their EVOC and landscape pre-repressure. That's an annual requirement for the state. Mont Eagle, Tracy, Groot, Lager, and Swanee, Fire Department's all participated in that. Fire Department EMS program that I talked about briefly last month, we're closer. Our instructor's graduated. He's getting his IC from one of the community colleges, and then we'll start the class probably first part of April at Mont Eagle. We'll do everything in-house. Think there'll probably be four EMTs that's now going to go into the program, and the rest will be first responders. We'll be able to offer medical calls and ambulance assist and all kinds of stuff for the community if the ambulance is out or whatever. And even if they're not out, they'll dispatch fire. We'll be able to do an assessment, get them vitals and pertinent information for the ambulance coming in, and just offer the citizens another service. So I'm pretty excited about that. Under the ISO guidelines, it's about every three years on a rotational period that fire hydrants are flowed, so the Water Department flows the hydrants for chlorine sampling and stuff like that. Then on the other side, NFPA requires the Fire Department to flow hydrants for fire flows. So with the ISO and the NFPA guideline, every three years, they'll flow the hydrants and update the flow charge, which not really too much changes here, but we still have to document it, put the stats on it. The last time this was done was in 2022 by Rogers Hydrant Service. They did an awesome job. Rogers charged about $17,000 to the city to do that. Well, now with myself and AJ and even the utility guys, we're willing to pick that up from the Fire Department's side, and we've got the town kind of quartering it off, and we'll break it into fours and flow each into town as we go across for the year and keep the statistics on it. In doing that, I think last year, or 2022, there were 29 fire hydrants that was deemed needing maintenance and repair, and I think it was around $26,000 that Rogers had quoted on the repairs. They actually repaired them. Myself, Kevin Gillum's a water guy, the Water Department, John, and a couple of guys there went out and repaired some of the hydrants on that list. And to my knowledge, it didn't cost us anything, I believe. There was one or two hydrants that had to be fully replaced, but for the most part, we were able to do them all in-house and repair them and save $26,000 there. So each one of these hydrants, there's a specialized tool that goes in, and it's called Through the Bond Repair. So you don't have to dig the hydrants. You take the bonnet off the top. It's a long T-handle thing with a special socket on it that goes down to the valve seat where you shut the isolator off to repair all this stuff. Those tools are about $2,000 apiece per manufacturer of hydrant. I'm trying to get my hands on a universal tool. Kevin Gillum's kind of guiding me into that, and I've spoken to a few other guys. We're willing to do that and chase a tool down. City's got a universal tool that Mr. Contral made several years ago that's practical for that one brand of hydrant, and it's a... You've got to call every member of the city to put the thing down in the pipe to turn, and it's pretty heavy. Looking for your blessings, though, to purchase that tool and pick up that program and give it a shot and see if we can do anything with it, with the Fire Department saves the budget. So there's that. That's Fire Department.
Let me just do a couple of quick things with the attendees. EVOC is Emergency Vehicle Training, and they have to qualify every year. The ISO, of course, affects your insurance ratings, so when they do this hydrant work and flow tests that are required, all of that is credits on our ISO, which is the Insurance Service Office, which sets your rates, insurance rates. So under your leadership, thank you, Travis. You're doing a great job with repairs, maintenance, et cetera. So thank you for your efforts.
Hey, Travis, real quickly, on these tools to do the flow monitoring, you said they're around $2,000 each or something. Is that something that needs to go in the next year's budget, or is this something that we would be looking at to pull out of the current plan?
So this is partially my fault because this was a third-party entity that flowed in 2022. This year's budget, I did not put that flow. I didn't know where that flow was going to fall into the budget at. That's kind of what has me. I've got all my reminders set for ISL, so this popped up probably two months ago, I guess. The tools, the maintenance tool, the T-handle tool, it's not really floating out of there, but I think I probably got that in my maintenance budget to purchase at least one tool, and that's kind of my goal. I was talking to John and Keith before your meeting, and whatever we have the most of as far as manufactured hydrant, I'd like to get that tool and start from there, at least it's something that we can...
And to address that, I've asked for prices, which Travis just said he's working on. I believe it's within my spending limit, and it's a budget item. So if we can get them, we'll get them now. If not, it'll be in the upcoming budget arithmetic. So thank you for that, Grant. Any other questions from the aldermen?
Yes. Two, I think. So we're saying that the fire hydrants, maintenance, or the hydrants, they...
I don't know on that one, Dean. I know I'm speaking on behalf of the fire department for the NFPA flows. That's where I'm at with it. As far as the maintenance and repairs, I don't know where that falls, John, do you have any input on it?
I'd say number one, but...
Well, I would assume that, I mean, I think that's always in one department.
Yeah, well, in some municipalities, the fire department does the maintenance on the hydrants and actually goes out and does what you're speaking of, chief. And I think that one of the end results would be to try to phase out some of the older hydrants and bring the network into compliance to have mostly all the same hydrants if we possibly can.
And that's something that I spoke to briefly to Dwayne about, a lot of these towns, if you, I mean, through the growth stages of the towns, they may, I'm just using an example, they may decide they're going to go with mule or fire hydrants. And they write an ordinance for that simply because parts are plentiful and that modernizes the system and standardizes the system, so they only have to have that one tool and that one operational set to work on that hydrant. That may be something that you guys want to do, I mean, that's...
We can address that at budget meetings. Any other questions?
Yeah, well, in your report, the fire department responds when EMS, ready, ambulance service request for lift assistance or something, what's the proper term?
It's a lift assist, so yeah, that's correct.
Okay, and what other things besides what I would call fire rescue?
So right now, we were dispatched over the weekend for an unresponsive female. Matter of fact, within a couple, within the last couple of weeks, we've responded. I carry an AED and a CPR equipment in my car. We're seeing this more and more with EMS especially that we've been working with them. Now I'm just moving to try to get the guys properly licensed because that requires a state license to do that and just to cover the liabilities. And I also think of it as, as these guys are volunteers, young members of the community, if this gives them a career path, if you will, and also lets them get back to their community in essence of, you know, emergency services, I want to pave the path for them and offer them something else they can do.
But you're probably going to need some startup things as far as supplies and stuff, so that's something that we need to be working on.
Yes, so there's, and that takes me to the budget. Matter of fact, I mentioned it briefly today, there was a training budget that I was going to try to, the old sewer plant, we've been using it for a fire training facility initially. Last year, I asked to turn that into a NFPA rated fire training facility, that's going to be boot doodles of bucks, about twenty-three thousand dollars. A little bit of that money's been written into this year's budget and I just asked Deb if we can move that and put that money towards this EMS program. I've received a few donations specifically for that, for EMS, so I guess we just play with the numbers and see where we go with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, chief. You want to do a building?
Yeah, I'm going to do building, all that AJ have it. So the building inspections report, I've done four inspections this month, two cert of occupancy's issued, two permits issued, one fire inspection request and done on a commercial dwelling, and there's one residential property under communications and review for condemning. So I'm at with that.
Okay.
Travis, is there any update on the Mountain Inn?
Mountain Inn, so they have six months from the time of fire. Right now, it still remains temporarily condemned. I actually made contact with them, it's actually in the codes report, for the Super Eight regarding some junk vehicles. I spoke to them and asked them what their, what their visions were on the Mountain Inn. They didn't really know, they would like to remediate it and I reminded them that it would have to be brought up to full code compliance and put in the sprinkling. So I think we're in talks.
So they've got, what, how many months left?
So fire was December the twelfth, roughly, you call it June or something like that.
And we haven't noticed anybody trying to, trying to live there?
PD's been doing a fine job patrolling it at the nights and I kind of make my rounds during the day and look at it and right now, no.
If we could back up just one second on the fire department. Briefly tell us about the tornado siren or the fire siren or something.
So tornado, me and you had kind of mentioned it in town one day. The old siren was taken down, the new siren was putting up, I still don't know who bought that or who's the ownership of that tornado siren, I don't know. So Montegoal is David's siren.
So David Zankley, I thought I called him, he said, I think he was mayor when that happened and the best of his recollection, if you push it, it blows the breakers and the nine-one-one sound.
That's what I was told.
So I'm assuming there needs to be some study as to whether it's needed and if it is, it needs to be fixed and if it's not needed...
Well, if that's the case, as far as I'm concerned, if you guys are good with it, we need to get it looked at because that is, it's going down in the dice and I don't know.
If I can interrupt, if I can interrupt, I received a phone call today from Don Hutchison that raised this very issue. I've asked the contractor that has looked at it in the past to look at it and give us a report before any expenditures. So that's being addressed. Thank you.
We don't know, then we'll push the button, might kill everything tonight.
Yes, I heard that report. Thank you. AJ?
So Travis mentioned about the super eight and everything, we served them about two weeks ago, three weeks ago actually, for seven business days to remove some junk vehicles that was parked out front, seemed like maybe doing some maintenance and stuff with them. They just gave seven business days, we come back, there were still a few vehicles that was parked out front, the rest of the vehicles is actually just moving around back, so they've now been suspended to court for, I think, March twenty-seventh for disabled junk vehicles on their property and in compliance with the ordinance. Two residential violations been served, discussed with property owners, got one more on my desk. That's just the typical property maintenance regs, junk kind of falls under Title thirteen along with junk vehicles and all that trash. Then we got about nineteen commercial signs all the way through the town that is in compliance with the, with the ordinance, with maintenance mainly. Signs that's been took down, signs of businesses that's burnt, that's going out of business that's still remaining there, sign posts that need to be painted, need to be took down due to just, you know, being completely abandoned from previous businesses or just in real bad shape, so that's under the sign maintenance under. No questions from citizens?
Is that the one at Hardee's you're talking about?
There's quite a few through town, yeah, there's one sort of pay Hardee's. So the main thing is businesses that's moved out and left their signs there more than anything Dixie Lee, where that building's no longer there. So it's just kind of making it stuff and stuff that should be able to be fixed pretty quick, quick and easy with contact with.
Is it a donut sign, a city sign?
It does have a city sign attached to it.
I saw that, I was wondering if that was our sign since it has the street names on there.
Yeah, that is attached on a piece of ankle iron to that frame, that sign frame.
So we're working verbally with all these folks at this point?
Most of them, you're going to have to, they've been sent out, a few of them, we've got a few more that's going to be sent out, certified mail. Make contact with them where they're just businesses out of Nashville and stuff like that and all they are is property owners. There's a few that would make straight contact with them. So we're waiting on, on that, see what we can get out of all them.
Anything else?
That's all on myself.
Alderman, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec?
We indicated to the mayor today that it looks like we're going to have a team practicing on the ball field this year, so that would be a step forward. And the Tracy City Reg Department has scheduled two tournaments slash games on our fields, one for April eighteenth and one for May the second. So at least we'll have a presence this year. Tracy City has been accommodating to folks in Montegoal that want to play ball there. We're trying to make our field and resources available to them because they're gracious enough to share their programming.
Okay, Alderman, any questions?
Are we going to need to fix that dugout then prior to that or are we going to just roll with it like it is? Have you looked at that?
We looked at it, we may leave it this year depending on the activities and what's needed.
What do you mean by fix it when you have bleachers left and dugout, right?
Well, the one has cover and the other does not.
I don't think we're going to provide cover.
I don't know if that would be an issue this year, I think they send in, get back to you on that. Probably more pressing issues than fixing that dugout.
Okay.
Thank you. Utilities?
I don't have anything, let's council this.
Council member, any questions?
I got a couple.
The what?
I said I have a couple. What about our phosphorus problem at the wastewater treatment plant, is it coming under control?
Yeah, it's been under control, yeah.
We're meeting permit? Well, good, thank you. The other thing, when I wrote it down, I think, maybe I didn't, oh, the reports, this sewer It looks like our I and I is still a major problem, we had four point five nine inches of rainfall and it looks like we're having, had seven million gallons of I and I on the report. Does the sewer treatment plant meter everything that's discharged out of the plant? Okay, does excessive rainfall bypass that meter or will we, the numbers we have will be accurate?
Everything comes through, nothing metered.
Okay, and then the flow meters for Tracy City and the housing project, those were temporary, those are not in place now or...
There's a flow meter at Tracy City. There were England, there was a flow meter there at Stacey.
Okay, then lift stations, like South Side Lift Station, it's not metered? So, okay, thank you.
Okay, I spoke to the engineer, I and I project is approximately seventy percent completed in phase one, they're sealing manholes, they've done some line repair and they've done some of the cut and dig, which is the first part of it, which upsets some of the road structure obviously. It's in their contract to restore it when the asphalt plant gets going, then they need to repair it with some fill and then the street covering. So that's all I have on utility. Any other questions?
Yeah, one question, John, on this sewer report, item D, total wastewater services sold, is that, is that based on, that's based on your water, basically your water supply? I mean, the water that you're putting on the system and metered?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, so your I and I number is based on just doing some math, subtraction from what your total is versus what you know you're getting from Tracy City versus what you're thinking you're getting from wastewater sold. I assume your wastewater sold, you guys are not including, you've got it divided out with folks that are on separate, pulling them out of the water sold?
Yeah, they're not, if they're not on sewer, they're not chargeable.
Well, there is though some I and I that is, that doesn't exist for people who have, who have a house that is being charged for sewer, but they're not actually connected to sewer. Actually, it makes our I and I seem less bad than it is. So you're right, there is that error in there because if there, sewers in front of their house, we're charging them for sewer even if they don't have sewer.
So this report shows two, almost two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day on the thirty-day average of I and I. Our permit is only for two hundred and fifty thousand gallons, correct? For that plant, for discharge at that plant?
I don't know. I'm contacting the state tomorrow because I've been reading. For a bit we got, according to what I read and Jerome reads, is five hundred thousand, that's what's in our state permit. I'm going to get, contact the angel tomorrow and find out what it is.
Okay, I think Travis told us it was two hundred and fifty thousand into Gillum Creek and two hundred and fifty thousand into, what's the other group?
The old plant, yeah. But we can't charge them, we can't discharge them, the old plant.
Let me check.
But in any event, we're either two hundred and fifty thousand gallon a day over on thirty-day average, over our permit limits or we're even with our permit limit.
Okay, planning commission, we'll deal with a little later. Beautification and Tree Board?
We had the first meeting of the Tree Board on the fourteenth of February and we have four professional foresters at the meeting, which I thought was really nice. We have been advised by those professionals not to put the Tree Board as a separate legal entity, which is what we were originally thinking, but to keep it under beautification and call it the Tree Advisory Council. Now, this body voted to have a Tree Board, so do we need to change that name officially with the Town Council? Or can we just start calling it?
I think you can just start calling it because it had not been formally formed, so I think whatever your committee does is fine.
We voted to make it a portion of the Beautification Committee, so...
Okay, good, good. The Tree Advisory Council is planning on having a tree planting and pruning demonstration as part of an Arbor Day celebration. We don't know the date yet and we're going to invite community members to come so that they can learn how to properly take care of their trees. So I'm thrilled that the Public Art Committee is going to meet on March third, so that will be great to have that done. And we have a local landscape person who is going to work on the triangle, the concrete triangle out here, you know, that is so lovely behind the post office. He is going to donate some plants and work on getting it where we can actually put plants in and we're going to have to come up with, I think it's about twenty-five hundred dollars for other plants or something like that. And we're going to leave space in the center of that for a sculpture, which we'll have to find a grant to pay for a public sculpture, but I think that's exciting too. And then Janet Miller Smith, who's Chair of Fundraising for Imagine Montegoal, has submitted a grant request to Lowe's Hometown Grants Program to pay for purchasing lights to go on the light poles out there since the ones we have were falling apart. And we're going to get some that are not Christmas, but we can have up year round. So we'll hope that comes through.
Alderman, any questions?
What was the Public Art Committee meeting, where is that?
March third and it's going to be at the Mountain Goat Trail, a Mountain Goat Market.
What time?
What time did she say? It's two thirty or three. Spencer is on the committee and she's going to host us.
Okay, thanks. Martha, good question. Do you know, so Dan and his landscaping company, they had said that they could, they could donate all the materials and it may take a year or more or we could find some funding to get it installed more quickly. Did he follow up with a timeline to when we would have to find it?
Haven't gotten that from him yet.
Okay, all right.
I believe he's still working on a total plan and when the time comes, we'll certainly ask for donations, just as has been done in the post office, there's a plaque in the post office for those that donated at that time, so we can work on that, I'd like to move that forward. Thank you Martha Ann for all your work. Obviously, some of this is long-term, some of this we can do right away. Under Martha Ann's guidance, we're trying to get as much done as possible, but properly. So thank you for your efforts. Imagine Montegoal?
Sure, so thanks to a lot of the volunteer efforts by Martha and others, we are moving forward on a lot of fronts, which is kind of nice. One of the things that the Steering Committee has been focusing on is zoning reform and trying to get our zoning ordinance in a better condition, both to reflect our goals and also to help developers understand better how to, how to invest in Montegoal. Part of that is focused really on downtown development and also on finding some more residential housing options. So we put out a request for proposal three months ago and have spoken with three different planning and zoning consultants. We received two packets, one from the Tennessee Planning and Urban Design Council out of Franklin and one from Codes Inc. out of Atlanta. And on the thirteenth of February, the Steering Committee and the Planning Commission got together and we reviewed those proposals. What had happened initially is those groups came and talked to us, they made an initial proposal... them, they felt like, and we felt like, there were some changes that needed to be made to make sure that we were, we were doing the best we could for Mont Eagle in the right timelines. So we actually got revised proposals from both of those firms. And when we looked at the revised proposals, there were really two different thrusts. Codes Inc. or Ink Codes wanted to really focus on downtown and focus on getting some, some more residential development around that corridor, but was also really to look at the whole zoning ordinance and make recommendations on the zoning ordinance, which is what we really wanted. But they felt like in their proposal, our money was best spent on actually making something happen downtown. So that was Proposal 1. It was for one year. And the second proposal from TPUDC, they sort of gave us two different alternatives, both of which were multi-year proposals that focused really on our zoning ordinance heavy. One of those proposals, one of the proposals we threw out, it just, it just didn't make sense financially. But the one that we, we sort of discussed was a multi-year proposal that would rewrite our zoning ordinance from scratch and it was also fairly expensive. So in talking through it with the group, we all felt like that it made more sense to really focus on zoning and get it done because there are few things in this world more boring than zoning, but it's important. So we focus on it, we get it done and we move on. The Ink proposal seemed to do a good job of that. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna start by looking at the entire zoning code and they're gonna make recommendations on every zoning district that will then go to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission will be tasked with taking those recommendations and figuring out how to make those changes happen. So that happened separate from the Ink Code. So we, they work with Southeast Development, our current planner, to make that happen. And then Ink Codes really just focuses on the downtown corridor, on trying to make our, get our zoning ordinance in a position where we can encourage development in that sector and also work with our residential districts around there to encourage more residential development because we know that affordable housing is an issue. So they wanna do that in year one. They think it'll actually take eight to 10 months. But they also had a phased approach. And what the group liked about their second phase is that their second phase is actually to work with specific landowners in the downtown corridor and specific landowners in the residential district to help them do some pro formas and help them do some theoretical developments and help them make a, make a good business case for investing in Mont Eagle. So I think the committee almost unanimously felt like that was a great way to go. I will tell the community that there were some concern that because these guys were from Atlanta, they had more of a, I guess, a big city mentality. So we're all, we may have to work with them some on that. But I think there are enough strong personalities, both on this board and on the Planning Commission, that we can probably make that work. So with that, on behalf of the Imagine Mont Eagle Steering Committee and the Planning Commission, they would like to recommend that we accept the Ink Codes modified proposal to do downtown development planning and zoning ordinance modification recommendations. That, so I would like to open up a motion and then we can have a discussion about it.
Is that a motion?
I'm making it right now.
Okay.
So the motion would be to accept the proposal from Ink Codes, not to exceed $65,000. That money is coming from a grant that we received from the Lynn Hurst Foundation to cover the cost of this planning. That we accept their proposal and, and move forward with that negotiation.
Okay. Being a committee, motion, it does not need a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
I, I think this is an ad hoc committee. We probably still need a session, particularly on a fiscal note like this.
Fine. Is there a second to the motion?
One second.
Okay. Thank you. Now, is there discussion on the motion? Alderman?
Just so everybody's aware, this is a, this is, this is fully funded, correct? Without a, without any matching funds?
Correct.
So this whole, entire 65K is funded by the, by the Lynn Hurst Foundation brand.
Yeah, I think, I think this is.
I know, I'm thinking, should we be saying?
Okay. While you're thinking, Dean, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Grant, back to your thinking.
I'm done, I'm done thinking. Never mind.
Okay. Dean, any comments?
No.
Nate?
Yeah, so I do wanna say that by accepting this proposal, we're asking the Planning Commission to really do a lot of work over the next six months. And so we're, they're, they're gonna identify areas of the code where we have problems, where we have inconsistencies, where we have things that, that maybe are not helping us develop in the way that we want. But they're gonna count on the Planning Commission and Southeast Development, who we already have a contract with, to come up with the actual language. So if this is something that you are interested in as a community member, I encourage you to begin to think about coming to the Planning Commission meetings because they're gonna have a lot to chew through. I think this is a good way to do it because it gets us through it quick, more quickly and gets us where we wanna be more quickly and lets us focus on, on other things we wanna do.
Gets community in.
Yeah.
So he can hear from people.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion?
What's the other part? I guess we're gonna vote. This is basically authored out in a contract?
Yes.
Okay. And then we're gonna let them work through the Planning Commission and Southeast Tennessee Development District to go through the plan and do what they've contracted to do with the town of Mont Eagle.
Yes. The mayor and Alderman will be, this will be the primary body that'll be working directly with them and then they'll be, they'll be providing their other recommendations to the Planning Commission to act on. But it'll sort of be, this, this body will be in charge of how those deliverables get doled out.
Well, I think there's many people in Mont Eagle, business people and citizens that feel like Southeast Tennessee Development District and the Planning Commission, the cause of Southeast Tennessee Development District is the biggest problem.
Yep.
So how's that gonna, how's that gonna work out well for the town of Mont Eagle?
Well, the hope is, we're providing them, or Codes Inc. is gonna be providing them with specific recommendations on way to improve the zoning ordinance. And that Southeast Development has been doing a reasonable job of making simple things happen. What Southeast Development has not done a particularly good job of is helping us make the zoning process better. So they're gonna receive recommendations to make the zoning process better and their job is gonna be to implement. So we don't ask, we don't ask them to design the house. We're gonna give them house plans and say, here, make this happen. Is it perfect? No. Is it, is it a good way forward with the budgets we have and the timelines we're working under? I think it makes a lot more sense than having a multi-year process to look at our zoning ordinance. I don't, I think Ink Codes Inc. said very well, most of this is not hard. Most of this is just looking at the zoning ordinance, coming up with quick and succinct recommendations and having them implemented. But when you hire a professional like that, they generate a lot of billable hours if they're creating the actual ordinances. So if there's a recommendation to streamline this process, whatever process, by doing A, B, and C, then Southeast Development's role in that would be limited to creating an ordinance that is legal in the state of Tennessee that addresses A, B, and C.
And this is something the university tried a few years ago?
No, this is not the same company.
I didn't say company. I said this is something the university tried to do.
No, no. This is very different from what they tried to do. What they tried to do was create more rules and that didn't work very well for them.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is review our existing rules and make them better.
I know.
Thank you.
They, they're not working very well.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
No.
Grant?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Nate?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a termination clause within this contract with them?
Yeah, it's, it's at-will. It's an acceptable of the proposal. So it's an at-will.
Okay. So we can cut them off at any given time?
Yeah.
Alderman report, Dean?
We met with MTA's script the other day and I guess for the public's benefit and for every, every local council, too. I think there's a lot of services that municipal technical advisory service, which is, well, actually Grant needs to tell us all this stuff. He just recently granted it. Summa cum laude. But my point is, we need, we need, I think, utilize MTA's, that they can do a lot of things for this community, that they have the expertise to do and the cost is not there when we go out to the private sector and contract out, for instance, with ordinances. MTA's has an department that knows ordinances. And right now, we're paying Chattanooga State Legislature about $400 an hour to do them. That makes no sense, I don't think, to the taxpayer of the Mont Eagle. And he can, go ahead, Grant, tell what you learned.
Well, I mean, so MTA's is a resource available to municipalities across the state and they, I think they tend to focus more on smaller municipalities than some of the larger ones that have their own set of specialty specialists and things like that. They can provide, so we have a, what they have is they have consultants for different areas, areas of interest. So they have a financial consultant that's dedicated to our, our area and hence our, our town falls within his area. I actually talked to her the other day on a phone call about something. She was very helpful, gave me an hour overtime or something to talk. They're there to help and it's a free service. Same thing for, they do some codes, codes reviews and helping with codes and ordinances. They've, everything from how you set up your charter, how you might need to charter, change your town's charter and things like that. There's a variety of these specialists that are called consultants out there that are a free service to us. My question last month was, are we, you know, I think we should be using this resource as free. They are professionals, state, state employees are professionals in their areas and we should be using them. My question last time was, hey, are we, are we using them? I found out that yes, we have used them in the past and we do have communication with them on a regular basis. And the lady was kind enough to come up here, our consultant was kind enough to come up here and meet with us last week. So it is, it's a great resource for the council and even the Planning Commission to use to, as we make some kind of changes or need some different codes or ordinances or something that we are gonna pass, change or alter in some kind of way. So it's a great resource.
All right. Do you have anything else to report? No, Grant, do you?
Do you have anything else?
Not to be under our business.
No, no, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Dan?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one thing. Sorry. Pull up over here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we get the codes and the access for the utility maps that we talked about with Travis the other day?
I didn't have a chance to work on that, but I, I will.
Can you also please review, you had brought up a concern about having that map plotted, printed and put on the wall up here? That shows all the utility lines, pump stations and everything. You could run down the concern about safety that you had brought up to decide whether we could, I think it'd be helpful. That's all I got.
Thank you. Nate, do anything?
Yeah, I was curious to follow up. The Grundy County Food Bank was here last month asking about a donation and we told them that we would look in the budget and see what we might want to, whether we might wanna contribute to that. And I was just curious. So I looked, we have not touched any of our senior citizen line item within the budget at this point. I, I don't know whether that has been allocated for something else and I don't, I don't know. I just wanted to kinda open up the conversation and see where people were on that because we told her we would give her an answer.
Well, they're starting again, senior citizen, they're going to make a motion to make a donation. That's right.
Well, I think that the idea was also that we were gonna check in with Morton Memorial. I did not get a chance to do that with their food program.
Rotary supports them in their hunger walk as well as all the donations, as I understand it. So if the town of Mont Eagle wants to make a donation to the food bank, accept a motion.
How would we take it out of senior citizens? They get a thousand dollars, they have a $2 million budget.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a budget line that hasn't been tapped and it would affect senior citizens.
That's not senior citizens' fault, that's the town of Mont Eagle's fault if we want to do the money.
Well, I'm, I'm open to other suggestions for other budget lines. I just, we said that we would look and.
I think it's a shame that we, their budget, $1,000, did you know?
Yes, that's what I'm looking at right here.
We got a $2 million budget, the senior citizens get $1,000 and they haven't spent it. There's light bulbs out over there, there's door sweeps, just little things that they can't get done. And we're gonna cut, we're gonna transfer that somewhere else. And to me, I think that's ridiculous.
I don't think we're transferring that.
No.
I don't think you should. Well, you can go ahead, they're not gonna get any benefit out of it.
Yeah, so my, my question was, what, what is that senior, what does that budget, that is for the senior citizens center next door? Is that right?
That's why I brought it up because I saw it hadn't been touched.
It started with some volunteers, two of the main leaders have relocated to another town in Tennessee. No one has picked it up. They do have their bingo from time to time. If there's some function, they're more than welcome to use the center.
That's the city building?
Yes, it's a city building. And they've asked for $100 when they start their bingo nights again to do food or something.
And are there maintenance, do we know if there's maintenance issues over there?
Well, if there are maintenance issues, we address them. We've addressed the heating area, we've addressed bulb replacement, but if someone knows of something, I'd be happy to take a look at fixing it.
So is this $1,000 that's left, is this leftover from a larger budget after fixing those things or where did those?
No, that's the total, that was a total line item from the budget that we're currently under.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Please don't use that budget, what if the $1,000 senior citizens, does we can bring down, remember, we're trying to push it over there? We don't buy any deals, our product, we don't buy any stocks, we don't sell our product. We make that revenue.
Okay, so y'all, y'all, what have you, I, I was just saying that it was there.
We got a municipality for, maybe Jess could give us a.
She did recently. I wasn't, okay. We'll look at that. Thank you. All right, council, what do you want to do? Is there a motion or not?
Well, so, so there are other places. We, we told them that we would look and so that was a thing. We also, just looking under other things that, I was trying to look under budget items that a donation to the food bank would benefit. And so the other would be that we're, we spent only 27% of our budget for Toys for Tots. So there's, there are opportunities if we want to. I'm putting it out there.
If we can amend the budget and take it out of any, and transfer it to that, can we not?
Well, we wouldn't have a budget line for that, so it would have to come out of some existing budget.
We could amend the account number, so for legal fees and take $500 out of legal fees and reduce that budget and donate $500 to food.
We could. I think you, you already know that the legal fees budget is about $20,000 withdrawn.
Yeah, and it was a $78,000 budget for something.
Do you have any budget fees, Mr.?
Not yet. All right, so what do you want to do, council? Is there a motion to donate to the food bank? Okay. Here and I will look at it at our budget meetings.
All right, well, hang on a second. We're, we're still thinking. Hold on a second.
We said last month that we could do so.
You made a motion to, did you make a motion earlier to give?
No, no, I, I brought it up under Alderman's report because it was something, last month, we told the food bank that we thought we could do something, we just needed to figure out what budget line it came out of. I have put two out there that didn't seem very well received. Dean has put out a third out there. So I brought it back up. I just wanna drop it.
Do, do other cities contribute to this? Tracy City, Colmont, do they, do they contribute to the plan as well?
We just need to find the money and do it. We should find the general budget, the general fund, whatever, pick it out of, send them a couple thousand dollars.
So if we make a motion tonight, we can figure out and come up with a dollar amount, we can figure out which budget item it comes out of later or not.
Yes. I think the city recorder and I will come up with an amount. I don't know if this fiscal year, we should go as high as 1,000. We can certainly look at it in next year's budget. What do you want to do from now to July?
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we. Okay, well then I'll, I'll make a motion that we give X amount of money to the, contribute to the Grundy County Food, Food Bank.
Like $200?
$500. We ought to be able to give $500.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
It's not coming out senior citizens.
Correct. So you guys-
Okay. We'll figure out it won't be senior citizen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll take care of it and advise. Any other Alderman reports? Okay, whole business is the second reading of ordinance 1-25 and 2-25, which is the rate increase for water and sewer. We've discussed it, the what? Do them separate. Ordinance, second reading of ordinance 1-25. We've discussed it. We've had motions. We've had public hearings. I'll accept a motion to approve on the second reading, ordinance 1-25.
I'll make a motion on a second reading of ordinance 101-25.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We're cool?
Just under discussion so that we don't have to do it the next time. So this is for two ordinances. This one is to take effect March 1st. The second one looks very similar, but it is to take effect in July 1st of 2026. So the, the reason we're about to do this twice, just to make it make sense, is, is to try to do minimal increases over a long period of time rather than jump anybody's bill.
Is there discussion on the motion?
When was the last rate increase?
Probably one year ago. Close to a year ago.
And this is primarily, I mean, the city has no choice except in order to meet state requirements for funding capital improvement programs. Other than, the town council could cut cost of operations if they can find those cuts and, and would directly affect the rate increase.
Regardless, the rate increase takes into account capital expenditures that we have been looking at. It also helps replenish the supply of the 70,000, no, 700,000 of water tank renovation, the water basin renovation of 81,000. So I think we all know that there's a need regardless of what the future holds in store. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention. Motion carries. A motion to accept on second reading, ordinance 02-25, which is part two of the rate increase. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 02-25.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm sorry, I didn't see the first, I didn't see the latest version. Did we change the date at the top of that from the, we did, okay, thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Another abstention. Okay. Next is on our whole business, C3, no, excuse me, C3 retail commercial.
That's what I answered.
I'm sorry?
I asked for that to be put on?
Yes.
We could pass that down, give each councilperson a copy. There's two pages there. And I'll be brief. Currently in C3, you have a copy there that shows uses that's allowed in C3. And I'll briefly just run down those. Essential services, public buildings and uses, automotive fuel cells, animal and veterinary facilities outdoor, automotive body shops, automotive wash facilities, breweries and distilleries, convenience stores, hotels and motels, restaurants, truck stops and fueling stations, and truck service facility is currently allowed in C3. What is not allowed in C3, it says, is simply retail and commercial use. And it doesn't give any, any sidebar to that or any other information. And I would make a motion that the town of Montegoal adopt a resolution that reads that retail commercial use will be the means, the use of land, buildings or structures for the purpose of selling retail goods and services to the final consumer. And includes the storage of merchandise on or about the premises in quantities sufficient to supply the establishment and may include, but is not limited, to grocery stores, department stores, restaurants, automotive repair centers, entertainment facilities and financial institutions in accordance with the land use model.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion on the motion?
So, so first of all, having just gotten this 10 seconds ago, I think it may be a little, maybe, maybe you should not be voting on this right now, maybe for the next meeting. But also, the, this seems to be a planning commission issue that they have already agreed at the last meeting that they would, their, our consultant is bringing them a new ordinance that talks about this, that they were going to vote on. I think it ought to go through their process before it comes before us. Because I think, because this is a, this is a planning commission issue. And if they don't, if they don't vote the way we want, then we have the opportunity to potentially override them. But I think right now is, is not really the opportunity to vote, or the right time to vote on this before the planning commission has their chance to, to view it.
We're the legislating body though. And if it's a resolution, not, I'm not asking that the ordinance be changed. All I'm asking is that that's a resolution that the city adopts. In the zoning ordinance, it has no definition for retail and commercial. Zero. So, so I guess my question would be, what is, currently right now, what would the definition of retail and commercial be that the town of Montegoal says?
I, I don't disagree with you on this. I just don't, I'm not comfortable voting after having just gotten this 10 seconds ago.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I, I just have a little bit of a concern. Dean, you, you brought this to us regarding C3. And you are the only member of this council that owns C3 property. And so I've had a couple of people reach out to me privately to ask the question about whether it would be appropriate for you to, to vote on this, given what would be a conflict of interest. You look at our, our charter, we're very clear in chapter four, that if there's any financial benefit, that we need to be abstaining from the vote.
Well, I assumed it would be kind of like you and Mountain Goat Trail. So I was taking the same premises, that you vote on everything for the Mountain Goat Trail. And, and it's my understanding that if there's a potential of conflict of interest, that one must only state that there is that potential, and it does not prohibit you from voting on anything that sounds before this council. And I would assume that's the position that you have taken on the Mountain Goat Trail since you've been on the council.
No, that's completely different because I receive no compensation or my financial aid.
I receive no compensation.
Well, you own C3 property, so changes in land use would affect your bottom line.
Well, C2 is more valuable than C3.
Doesn't matter. You would materially benefit from a change in the C3.
Since you're concerned, self-concerned about this conflict, potential conflict of interest, and you see nothing about the Mountain Goat Trail, that you've got property that's by it and involved in property acquisition, you know, just vote to your conscience.
Again, I receive no compensation for that. I'm calling to-
I haven't received any compensation for a zoning change. Zoning has been changed several times and I have property and I don't receive compensation for it.
We have not changed the zoning ordinance since you've been on the council that would material affect, materially affect any of us.
Well, I think you're full of crap on this. And I would say probably that we ought, this ought to be probably the first thing we send to MTA's.
The actual, the, the, chapter four of the ethics says it has to go to our attorney. They're the person who makes the decision.
Well, you're our attorney on most things, or you're-
No, not.
Well, gentlemen, gentlemen, I understand all the positions. I don't see why we can't define retail commercial use and move forward with it. We can send it to the attorney. We can get it, we send it-
Well, if we pay him $400, I withdraw my motion and wait until it goes before the planning commission. When do they make, Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yeah. I don't think the town of Montegoal needs to be spending $400, $500 for these attorneys over things that MTA's can do.
Do you think planning commission and MTA's would get your opinion?
Well, I brought this up last month.
I know. An opinion by the march meeting? So we could put this to bed?
Well, I'm sure, I don't know. But if, if the planning commission, we'll have to see what their vote is. And then it'll come back to the council. And then the council ought to vote on it, up or down. And if Nathan thinks I'm receiving something directly that I should not be, I think he ought to contact the attorney general's office.
Did you, let me, let me mediate for just a second without mediating. Did you, where did this definition for commercial use come from? Again, I just, I feel like it's too, I don't, I don't want to vote on it in something else.
Well, I'll withdraw my motion.
I mean, I'll, I'll look at it next month, but it's too quick to do this right now.
Then let me say this.
It's complicated and I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. The motion is withdrawn, but I would ask that Dean work with MTA's and see what the-
I don't think that's a conflict then.
No, all right. I'll work with MTA's and we'll see what the planning commission- Let's go back to having some order. I will work with MTA's. We'll see what the planning commission comes up with Tuesday and we'll move forward from that point. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, please, if we can continue, gentlemen, if we can continue, safety issues on Ren's Nest and Pilot entrance. I believe this was also requested to be put on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The police department has, on a couple of occasions, has said the pilot is one of the, the most frequent accident zones that we have. And it would, I would think we ought to try to check in and see if there's something that can be done there to reduce the, the number of accidents. And it's certainly a, a traffic nightmare if you go out there and try to navigate that. And I'm assuming we'd have to, to ask for TDOT to meet with us and perhaps Pilot and see if, if there can be a study done to, to see how to get the truck traffic in and out of the main road out there. And also for TDOT to properly maintain the highway. You can't navigate the highway there for the potholes and the state of disrepair that the roads in, the bridges got holes in it. And then on Ren's Nest, it's, I think since years ago, it was a high accident thing. But the state did a couple of studies on it and came up with a caution light thing. And I think the number of accidents are down, but, but the traffic is still very congested there. And, and when they did the, the caution light, one of the things the city did was put in, there's three lanes there. There's, there's a center turn lane and it was striped and it was very defined. And if you go down there and look at it now, there's no, nothing there. And I think we need to do something for the protection of, of the people that travel that area. And I don't think it would be a conflict, Grant, if you voted for it, because you live up there. And so I would ask, make a motion that we take appropriate steps to get technical assistance on those two issues and potential remedies on making that, making those safer intersections for the town.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a discussion point. TDOT is aware of Ren's Nest because I've attended some of their meetings. And that's what brought about, quite frankly, the roundabout and the, what they're calling peanut, which is the oval shaped intersection directory.
Can we ask for them to put illuminated striping there for us?
I have mentioned striping as well as what is their final version of turn lanes in the roundabouts. But yes, I'll be happy to contact TDOT again on Ren's Nest. Pilot, I can ask them for a traffic study or a conference or a review. We should proceed. So we're at the point of discussion of the motion. Any other comments?
Yes, on the, on the Ren's Nest side, so, yeah, that'd be great. I know TDOT's about to blow that whole thing up in a year or two, but it'd be great if we could get some painting on 41 right there. That's, that's great. What I think the city may be responsible for, and they've done this in the past, but I don't know why it wears out so quickly, but in the coming, if you're, if you're on Ren's Nest exiting onto Highway 41, Main Street, the, there's, there's a right, there's a right-hand turn lane and there's a, a center lane that's supposed to be a left-hand turn lane to get you onto 24 going towards Nashville. It is a cluster. I'm, I'm there every day. And people who are out of towners and all don't know, they're in the right lane to turn left, they're in the left lane to turn right. Happens all the time. What happened a couple of years ago is they did put some stripes, they put some arrows on there to show that the center lane is a left turn lane, the right lane is a right turn lane. Those wore out really quickly. If we could repaint those, I think that would be a start. What I would really love to see right there, and I don't know if TDOT will do this for us when they redo this, but really what it should have is they should have in that center lane, it should be a left-hand arrow with the 24, 24 West sign, logo on it, right, right? And then in the other lane, it should be a right-hand turn only and the, the 24 West, 24 East logo on it. And I don't know if that's city or state, or city or TDOT or who, who should be doing that, but I think-
It's TDOT and, and it's in the, in the plan for the peanut. And they'll probably have that insignia on there in the peanut.
Certainly for the peanut. I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do until, because that's a long time down the road.
I've been looking, I've been looking for contractors and I think there are a couple that I'll list for estimates. Obviously they pull me off because of the weather. But now I think we could, if the asphalt plants are opening March 1st, they may be able to start painting March 1st. And I'll get answers on that. But I think all we can do is Ren's Nest. The turn lanes off of 41 is certainly TDOT. But I'll mention all of that to them.
Agreed. And I assume the city for the Ren's Nest side of it, that the city has the capability to, city has capability to do that type of painting?
I think so. Without the city, we'd have to give it out.
Not adequately.
We don't have any kind of striping machine.
So we would have to contract that out?
Yes, but there are a couple of locations that I would do.
Make some statement.
Yeah.
Snow market.
Okay, moving on. Oh, I'm sorry, there's a motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I probably need to disclose that I own property there at that intersection.
Can we, can you repeat the motion?
That we contact TDOT and the pilot owners around here and come up with a plan to remedy the issues that vote Ren's Nest and whatever, exit 135 is there.
Okay. And that has been seconded?
And the safety issue.
Yes. That has been seconded? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will work on that. Is anyone here from South Cumberland Chamber Okay. To be a member of the chamber, we fall under the business category and that's an annual fee of $225. If there's no objection to joining the Chamber of Commerce, we will proceed with that. Do we need a motion or anything? Is there any discussion or objection to joining the South Cumberland Chamber of Commerce?
Oh, quick, do you, the, the young lady who is in charge of the tourism committee, do you see this as a benefit? But you may have a conflict of interest since you kind of are involved with them.
No, I, I think that we are all almost together. So the chamber is also putting on the mountain market.
Do you think this is a good, this is a good thing?
Therefore, if there's no objection, we'll proceed with that.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Okay, next is Unaka North Club Circle, the city streets. This requires, I think, more research and input from those affected. So I'll put that off- think, more, um, research and input from those affected, so I'll put that off till the March thirty-first meeting. I'm sorry?
This has been an issue for over ten months. This is an issue.
I understand it's an issue, and we also, as you know, I tried to help the situation, and was told that I was completely off-base.
Why?
Because it's a private road according to existing, uh, wait, let me finish, according to existing city ordinances, so I was told in no uncertain terms that we should remove those speed bumps immediately, and the neighbors can discuss it and bring it forward at a point. We are now at that point in time, so if there is input or an issue, please contact an alderman, or myself, or someone, and we will have a final resolution by March thirty-first, because I do know.
I, I don't, I, I don't think there can be a resolution to it right now.
Over in city road or it's not? It's not a city road, I'm gonna block it off.
When, uh, when we were told back in early two thousands, when the nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Numbers was beginning out, we was on North Bluff Circle Drive. It has been some change since then to Bluff Circle. Uh, it was chipped and tarred back in the last administration, because it was told as a city road. Before that, when Marilyn was mayor, she said that she couldn't go with the idea of it, because she lived on that road, and I respected that. And then she says that I come up here to City Hall. Debbie, you know myself, I've been up here three times to put paperwork in for the work that was done down there. The city, street, and commission did come down there and chip and tar that down there. Okay, I asked for the speed bumps for the safety of traffic that's coming in and out from down below us. Right there by the driveway, that's a blind spot. Years ago, you could be able to see vehicles coming down through there, because Ron and Marilyn didn't have as much business going on, and stuff that they have accumulated over there, like we all have in our residence. Now, with that being a blind spot up there, my son, my wife, and myself have almost been hit right there at that corner on numerous times, because of the traffic coming up through there, at a higher rate of speed than needs to be. We put the speed bumps up, they was asked to be taken down. Now, I grant you, they were big speed bumps, they were, but it did not damage our vehicles, because we took our time in coming over. If it damaged anybody else's, I'm gonna guarantee you, it was due to speeding. Okay, now with that being said, by taking them speed bumps out, you have increased that speed on that little drive, and it's not a very big drive. It's just like up here at the school zone. Our school zone lights flash until three fifteen in the afternoon, right? As soon as them blue lights leave the school zone at three o'clock, two fifty-nine, that traffic through that speed zone, that school zone increases. That's the same way as what we got right down there in front of our house where our grandchildren play, and we've been down there for going on three centuries, or three decades.
Okay.
Well, the house has been there for over fifty years, and I've lived there my whole life, but somebody did go to one of the city aldermen and got the speed bumps taken up.
Yes, I know.
So somebody has favoritism somewhere.
Well, I was going by.
I just need to know, if it's, if it's not a city road, I'm blocking the whole thing off. They gonna have to find them a way to get down in there.
It's in an ordinance that says, the following list includes private streets. These streets have not been accepted and are not maintained by the town of Mont Eagle. Now that's the ordinance that was passed, I believe in twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten, yeah.
So, I will now turn it over to the alderman, since it's an agenda item. You've heard the gentleman's comments. Alderman, what's your discussion?
I, I, I'd like to, to, to address it a little bit.
Okay.
Because I'm the one that brought it up, that it was a private road, and my, my issue with it is, is not to decide who's speeding or who's not speeding, or, or what we need to be, my, my issue was simply that it was listed as a private street, and when we do public work on a private street, that's not appropriate. If it's a private street, we have no regulation of putting a, a speed bump on it, so if you'd like to control the speed bump, if you'd like to control the speed, I'd encourage you to do that, and it gives you a lot more freedom to have it be a pump, to have it be a private road. I, I heard afterwards that we have maintained it over time, and that, that is likely true, I don't know, but what we have is a written record that it is a private road, signed by the mayor, um, and approved by the alderman, saying it's a private road, and we're not supposed to be spending public money on private roads. Now, I think there was, and, and Dean may bring it up, we can have a conversation about whether we want to incorporate it into a public street. I think you said it well, it's awfully narrow, we would have a hard time making it a safe public street, so from, from my perspective, it seems like it might make sense to keep it as a private road. Now, there is, there is a Tennessee State Private Roads Act that would prohibit any landowner from blocking off another landowner, but it doesn't really say anything else about how, it, it says that the maintenance can be shared, but I, I, I hope.
I know that's not gonna happen.
Right, so, and, and, I, I, unfortunately, I can't have a solution for that, but, but I would hope that a private road would give you more options for being able to, to work on the, on, on that. The other.
Any of you, other aldermen have any conversations about this?
Where, where were the, uh, where were the speed bumps at, Dennis?
Uh, okay, you know where Marilyn's.
I'm turning in, I'm turning in at, at Marilyn's, and I want to know, is the speed bumps beyond that?
One is right beyond, uh, right there where Johnny Sanders and Marilyn's driveway crosses.
Right, right.
Bluff Circle.
Right.
Uh, we, we asked for one to Bigfoot right there in that blind spot, to slow down the traffic coming around the corner, us or the others that lives down there. Uh, the other speed bump was put down at the end of our drive, well, right in the, right in front of our house, yeah. Right in that center spot there.
Just to slow them down in front of our house, after they get past the speed bumps?
You know, what, what they did beyond my property, I'd give a care less, and I'm up here fighting for what's in front of our house, I'm not fighting for Marilyn, Doris Sanders, or Silas's old place up there. I'm fighting to keep my family and my grandchildren safe, that's what I'm fighting for.
Because they fly, they absolutely fly, and you can sit there and watch them.
Yes, I've talked to Dennis a couple of times about this, and, uh, actually called the former mayor, and, and she told me that she thought it was a city street, uh, but the main issue is about letters, that's, that's streets and adopted and all that, it depends on when the, who's in the administration as to what the list is, it's been changed several times in past administrations, and, and, uh, I don't think, uh, you, you can hold a hundred percent weight in, uh, these private road designations and, and public road designations, and in fact, I think the other day, Nate, you, you mentioned that you had told Keith to take some roads off, or to do something on, on the list?
No, I.
I don't know, I'm not saying it's the, the ordinance list, but, but you, you said in there that, uh, you had talked with Keith and asked him to review and take off?
So, so the, when I, during my first term, um, I, I felt like we needed a road list, we need to answer these questions, it needs to be really clear, and so I put together a road list based on something I got from Southeast Development, and I gave it to, well, it was, it was my second term, because I gave it to the mayor, and said, can you look at this, I don't know, what, all they did was download off a, off a Google map and made a list, and I said, well, you and Keith work through this and, and figure out what's a public road and what's a private road, and so they edited it based on Keith's understanding, which was the best thing we had to go off of at the time, but we haven't taken any action on that list. I would like to take action on that list, and, and, and based on this, and, you know, this is one of a, at least a half dozen streets that are like this, where it's not really clear, and one of the things that other towns do is if you have a public road, it's green and white, like, the sign is green and white like all our signs are, and if you have a private road, it's white and green, and then everybody knows, and it becomes clear as everybody's driving down it, and it keeps.
Our Bluff Circles is green and white.
Well, we, Mont Eagle hasn't done that, and, and so, one of the, what I would like to do is, is deal with, maybe create a road list, which is gonna take us months, because we're gonna have to work through each of these issues. Some of them, we have a written record of, like this ordinance from twenty-ten, a lot of them we don't have a written record of, but we're gonna have to make some decisions as a town, and then what my hope would be is that we can make those decisions, that then we get the signage right, and then it doesn't become who is in office, it becomes very clear to everybody who drives by, you know? Um, and, and that doesn't help y'all, but that's, that's, that's what I'd like to do, to hopefully help us all going forward.
Well, I know back in nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, when my mom was ill, her nurses couldn't get to her, so the city come down there with a grader and graded the road and cleared it off, so her nurses could get down in there. So, if they done that ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, why would they do that if it was a private road?
Well, let, let me, let me tell this, and then, um, of course, I talked to you, and I felt like it was something needed to come before the city council, but after talking with some of the other council members, I agreed with, with their assessment that, in your particular case, I think we need to defer it until a march, and, and I'm more than willing to, to vote yes or no on it in march, but to give the other people that utilize that road potentially, to give them notification that this is an issue that's gonna be dealt with at the march meeting, and whatever interests or, or statements or, or concerns that they have, they need to make those known, uh, through City Hall or through us individually, hopefully a week or so prior to the meeting in March, so we will have what their concerns are, and, and then look at that and, and see, and if you've got a neighbor in front of you, or behind you, or, or whatever, that has a different view, that we need to, to weigh that, and, and then going down your, your, that road, whether it's private or public, a, a, a big thing that, that would benefit the people on the east side, uh, if, if you're over on the main road going down, those locks are real long, uh, they're probably four or five hundred feet long, some of them, and we have, uh, uh, in, in subdivision regulations, there, there's a section in there that, that your block cannot be, uh, longer than fifty percent of the width or something, it's near that, Nate?
The intersection.
Yeah, it came up on, uh, up here on the, uh, y'all voted on it, I think, on, uh, Laurel Trail Road, that guy was gonna put those houses in there, because those locks were too long.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I think he had to get, or do something.
He's trying to prohibit flat law.
Well, yeah, but ultimately, uh, but it's the same situation over there, if you go down the front road, those houses are all built right up on the road, and then you have that gigantic strip behind it that joins the driveway, and, and so, it, it, it limits the people that live on the next street as to what they can do with their property.
That's the thing, though, is, about the situation.
Well, I am, that is, that is the situation.
Okay, so what do you want to do?
I'm just, kind of explaining to them why, uh, I don't feel like we need to vote on it tonight.
Right, and, and I agree, and I, my apologies, I, I don't know the situation out there, I will go out there and take a look at it, this is fairly new to me.
I'm home every Monday, if you want to come, I'm there every Monday, and I can walk you through it.
I may, I may do that with you, um.
I appreciate it, because I can give you the history of that whole road and how it comes about.
So, what, what you, what you all are looking for is speed control?
Safety.
Whether it's private, whether it's private or public, right? So, one of the problems, and I'll be glad to go out there and look at it, and, um, and that's part of, part of my job, part of my responsibility, um, I guess, one of the, posing back to the, the council here, we've got a real issue with this determination of private road versus public road, and the, when you look back at the history, you look back at the deeds, they're confusing, they override each other in a lot of cases, so I would like, before we vote on, on, uh, next month, the other property owners deserve to have their input, just like Dean said, but I think it's due diligence upon us to go out and look at the deeds, and let's find out if there's any kind of legal, uh, documents that, that determine the, the, what that road is, what it was supposed to be, what it was designed for back in the day, whether that's from deeds or something else, but I think we've got to find, we've got to find that, that part out as well as the other.
Well, there's your company, the renters, you know, they're getting a home in the outer area, good luck with that.
Well, we can go to the courthouse to get deeds and, and look at subdivisions, that kind of thing.
But understanding the location of this situation, though, when you pass, when you pass Marilyn's driveway, and you pass the old, uh, Johnny's old driveway.
Mm-hmm.
That's a dead-end street down there, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Everything past those two driveways is yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
Well, except for number one down there.
Except for number one down there at the end, that don't belong to us.
Yeah, we're up in Daddy's house, too.
Yeah, we're up in Daryl's house, too.
Oh, you're in the big house?
Yes.
Yes, and so there's someone else living in that street.
Yes, and that, and that's the ones that we're having troubles with, that, I, I've talked to them twice.
So, in, in the meantime, though, I mean, I think we have on record that it's a private road, so if you guys wanted to do something to mitigate.
Well, it really, may not be arguing with you, or, you know, having a tear contest, it, it really depends, you know, we had Rollins as Maryland, it was a city street. Marvin Brandon, it was a city street. We go with Marilyn, one term it was, one term it wasn't. David, it was until Tony Gillen rode down and seen how bad the road was, that's when it got chipped and tarred, and David Sandwick and Tony Gillen there.
Well, what I was saying is, in the meantime, because that's the only written record we have, if, if y'all want to add some speed control devices to that road, it seems like it's a private road, so you guys could do that.
And, and I'm, I'm not against that at all, but, um, before we give away a road based on a, what is a bad road line of private versus public, we need to solve that first.
What they're gonna do is, they're gonna, they're gonna get mad, err, and they're gonna go up through there, basically.
They got several forms of complaints.
They need to do, excuse me. That's about that crossing, conversation. Thank you. Let me tell you some order of this. I had conversation with some of the neighbors, and they said, all they have to do is come down, and we'll talk together. That's up to you if you want to do it. What we're going to do is, once it gains, be ready for the march, ready for the screening, and see our best results. We're gonna talk to the alderman, and that's what we have to do, alderman, have any closing statements?
You mean for the entire meeting?
No, for this.
Oh, no. No more?
Yeah, okay, and that's what we'll do. If you have other thoughts, please get them to the alderman, or send them, thank you. Business permits. Somebody, um, I'm, 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 I'll just introduce myself, hey, council, neighbors, Mario, Eli, I, my family and I have gone to Nashville for ten years, we got two young boys, six and a four-year-old, we just bought a second home up here, and we're really excited to, to be part of the community. So, when you're not here, you're gonna have a meeting?
Uh, very limited time, but yes.
Would you want to?
Yeah.
So, there's discussion?
Uh, they, they have.
There's, they have, right? Is there any discussion, um, is there a motion to accept the business permit?
Is this on a, is this on one of the plat, one of the, um, uh, short-term rental platforms?
Not yet.
Airbnb, is it your intention to put it on Airbnb or, or Airbnb or something? Do, do, for short-term rentals, do, do you need a permit if you're doing it on the platform, or?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, except the business. I'll second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rules? Thank you.
Big discussion.
So, have all the came in? Four seventy-three comments true, maybe a moon? This is self-explanatory. 473 College Street, maybe in room? Is this self-explanatory? I want to get it on your sounds. Is this service? Or should we? I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brittany Rollins. Uh, this is my husband Robbie or the boys back there somewhere. Um, I am a registered ultrasound tech. I do primarily women's health and, um, ultrasounds. So we are proposing to bring a business here in Montegoal. I'm planning on doing a 40 ultrasound boutique where women can come and get pictures of their babies. Not diagnostic, just novelty where they can come in and take a peek at the gender, take a look at baby's face, um, get the cutesy picture. And I'm also gonna do some boutique baby highlights as well, like little sleepers and things like that that you want for your baby. Um, we want it to be a, a way that people can come and bring their families. Usually in medical settings, they are not allowed to come. Only a couple of people can come. And then we want to be something inclusive to your family members where you can bring mom, grandma, you know, grandpa to come and see the baby. And so we are, um, both citizens of Montegoal and a parent of her own lives and we're just looking forward to hopefully bringing a business here.
Any questions on this? What is this permit?
Which building is this?
It's 73 College Street, Suite V. It's in, it's beside the Quail Properties. So Miss, I think Ms. Katie was here earlier.
Oh, okay.
Country Mar?
Yes. Well, it's not a country mar, it's the one-
Oh, in the middle of town.
In the middle of the car town. Yes.
You know, go with the-
JD's open.
I'll make a motion. We approve the permit.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Need to permit that.
Okay. Is there other business? I'll check out the second motion to adjourn.
Wait, hang, hang on. Um, are we not supposed to be voting on the, uh, the 911 communications contract? That has, doesn't that have to be approved by, uh, before the, before March 12th or whatever?
Is there a motion to accept?
Is everybody resists?
Yeah.
And that we've reduced the cost for 911. It's being split up between us and Marion County. Um, so we've reduced our cost for 911 by about, uh-
$10,000.
10, yeah, 12, $10,500 maybe.
That's the interlocal agreement.
Yes.
Yes. I'll make a motion. We accept the interlocal agreement with-
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Grant.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we'll adjourn.